This meeting, first of all, it's Committee of the Whole. First of all, City Council Committee of the Whole to order, roll call please.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum. We do have an item for the City Council this morning that we don't see the applicant is in the audience, so we're gonna, Chief of Police is kind enough to wait. If they do show up, we'll take that matter up, but we're gonna move on with our agenda for the Committee of the Whole. So, first item of discussion for the Committee of the Whole this morning is Minnesota DNR State Park Road Account Program, and we'll call on our City Engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Hey, good morning, Your Honor, and members of this council. The DNR is accepting applications for the State Park Road Account Program. There's approximately $4 million of funds available for statewide. These funds can be used to improve local access roads for state parks, state campgrounds, public water access, and other eligible recreation items. These applications are due November 1st. Since then, staffs, we've been evaluating potential candidates for this program. We're recommending the access road for DeLagoon Park be the city's candidate for this program. It consists of some full-depth bituminous patching as needed and resurfacing throughout. I have an exhibit showing one on the map right here. We're estimating this project, including the loop, which would be the yellow areas highlighted, and also, I guess I call that teal, at $290,000. The city's request from the State Park Road Account Program would be the yellow portion of the road. We're estimating that at $210,000. The local match could be potential park and rec budget, or some of our annual levied funds for our mill and overlay. So at this time, I'm requesting authorization to apply for the State Park Road Account Program, and I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian. I'll offer that, Your Honor. Got a motion?
Second, Your Honor.
Second to bring this to the council. Anyone have any questions for Brian?
I'd call it more of a light blue than a teal, really.
Fair enough.
Okay. Glad we're on the same page.
All right, we have a motion to bring this item to the council on Monday evening. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you, Brian. We're gonna call on Grant from Bolton and Mank next, I believe, to give us an update on the DeLagoon Park improvements. Good morning, Grant.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor, Council members. Here just to give a brief update on progress we've had on the DeLagoon Park Improvements project so far. We met with city staff multiple times throughout the summer, just to further identify the scope of the project. We used the 2014 master plan as kind of a inspiration as to some of the improvements to the campground, and from there, we used the $5.2 million budget that you guys have to further refine and define that scope. So attached, there's two figures here. I'll walk through showing the campground improvements, as well as some of the utility improvements that we're planning on. So, this first figure, the entrance into the campground will come spur off of the boat access road for Pebble Lake. On the, kind of that black area, it will be asphalt, and then there's kind of three different loops, per se, that you'll be able to use for, that'll provide RV camping and/or pull behind camping. And so there's 44 camping sites, all will have electrical and water hookups. That center road, kind of from the park entrance up to, there's a white rectangle where the main restroom shower building is. Those sites will also have sanitary sewer hookups, but not all sites will have sanitary sewer. As users leave the park, there are two dump pits that will be accessed. That also, there's an inset there on the bottom right that shows the dump pits as people leave. That'll be just off of that access road for, or boat access road for Pebble Lake. On the very top end, there's kind of a, the very top of your drawing, there's also a loop that will be for tent sites. There's nine tent sites in that loop that will have vehicle access to them, and they'll have electrical and then a centralized water. And then on the far right, there's also four tent sites that'll be walk-in, so kind of more primitive. There'll be no utilities. Those are up, kind of high up on a hill, but they'll literally just kind of be a pad for tents to set up there. As I mentioned before, that kind of white rectangle is the main restroom building, and so that's centrally located there. There'll be bathrooms, as well as showers, located there. The other improvement, kind of on the far upper left, is a upgraded access road to both the archery range and firing range. There'll be some dedicated parking for the archery range, and then we'll upgrade the parking lot for the shooting range as well. We'll maintain access to the stair trail connection to provide some parking for that. And I think that's kind of it for this figure. Do you mind going to the next one? This next one just shows the utilities. As you can see, it's, we have to connect all the way down at Shoreview Drive with both water and sanitary. The sanitary is kind of hard to see, but it's the green, and then the blue is water. And so we basically route that from Shoreview up to the campground area. Along the way, we'll have a couple different services, one for a proposed future concession stand restroom building for the soccer complex, as well as connecting to the existing restroom structure for the softball fields at Pinwheel, the four, four different fields there. And then obviously, we bring it up to the campground area, the utilities. There's some pink dots that you see sprinkled around the fields. Those are the proposed upgraded lighting for both the softball fields, as well as Farmer's Field and Legion Field for the baseball complexes. So that's also a part of the scope for this project as well. And that, the lighting will be through the state bid list source well, and so we're working directly with Musco, which is a provider for source well on getting quotes for that. Another piece I wanted to touch on is, per Minnesota state statute, we need to do a, requires all non-federal public lands to do a state archaeological review. So both SHPO and OSA, SHPO is the State Historic Preservation Office, and OSA, Office of the State Archaeologists. Because OSA has a high probability of four archaeological site, we had to submit our proposed plans to them. And they, OSA has responded so far, SHPO has not responded, but OSA recommended a Phase One archaeological survey. And so we're moving forward with that. We're not, at this point, anticipating there being significant findings, but we have to move forward since that was their recommendation with that. The, depending on the outcome of the Phase One survey, we'll send that to them. If there's further, a Phase Two survey required from OSA or SHPO, there is potential to delay the project, but we're not anticipating that to be the case. But I just wanted to be forward with that, if there was any findings from that. Schedule-wise, we're moving forward with the final design, kind of per these figures and drawings, with the goal to bid this project in early 2024. And then depending on bids, if they're favorable, and if it's awarded to a low bidder, construction would start next summer. Albeit that, as I said, the lighting will be through source well, so that's almost a separate contract that'll be through source well. Once we get a final quote back from a contractor there, we can, and that pricing is secured, we can move forward with that earlier than the campground improvements. And so that could potentially start yet in 2023, once we get that finalized. So, any questions at all from you guys?
Is it my understanding that when they start work out there, we will be closing down the campground?
Correct. Yep, yep. So it would essentially be closed for the 2024 season.
For next summer, then?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, Thomas?
And I think I already mentioned this to Brian, but I'd been contacted by someone involved with the BMX track, that they would appreciate kind of a heads-up of the construction schedule and some flexibility around making sure that those users can still access. I know they have a big event every summer.
Yep.
And so, yeah, I made Brian aware of that, and I think we should be able to work with them.
For sure.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, keep going.
Well, and I'll just say, I mean, it's great to see this project come to fruition. You know, we've been working on it for quite some time, and it's just another thing that's gonna, you know, bring people to Fergus Falls to, you know, to participate in recreation and spend some money while they're here, and make it a stop on their camping trip. You know, with like the BMX track moving out there, and we've got the disc golf course and the baseball and softball, it's, you know, really gonna turn into a regional attraction. Hopefully, it's gonna benefit our city. So, thanks, everybody, for your hard work.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Go ahead, Scott.
I'm pretty pleased with this plan as well. As people look at it, they're not necessarily gonna recognize the difference between the old and the new. One of the things that I thought was most significant is that the existing campground only has 14 RV sites, and this has 44, so we're bumping it up by more than double, triple. Morning math, a little tough today. Forty-four RV sites, I think that's pretty good. Just, in an effort to try and get the most bang for the buck, you might say, I guess I was hoping that we might see some alternates involved in the plan, too, that, you know, perhaps some additional extensions of the water into the tent camping, or some other types of things that might give us some things to, you know, use all the money we can, that we can, and get the most out of it. Whether or not you've got any alternates planned for this or not, I guess is the gist of the question, or was it all gonna just be one package, that's it?
We have run through several iterations through kind of the scoping that, there was a group, there was a loop kind of up on the north side as well for additional RV. So we certainly can include some of those additional, like I say, alternates where there would be additional RV spots, or like I say, we could add water. I think that's very reasonable to have some alternates put together. And as we continue through final design, we'll identify maybe some of those alternates that we'd like to bid with the project, if pricing comes in favorable and we're able to do it and the budget allows. So, yep.
Very good. Then, just one last point was, at the very bottom of the map that you've got, well, the other one, the connection is at Shoreview, and I believe it was just last week, we talked about the pavement of that, that is by petition, that neighborhood was asking for that street to be paved. And so, as this work is contemplated and that work is contemplated, are we gonna hopefully get this done before that street gets paved, and then we gotta rip into there and connect the utilities? So that's probably a question that Brian could maybe more answer.
Yeah, no, we, I can't recall, I believe the utilities are actually stub beyond the roadway there. But yes, if we happen to pave before this project, we would do some utility extensions, you know, extend them beyond the roadway before we'd start the paving, or vice versa, so.
Sure.
Yep.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Scott?
I know, you know, this design is completely different to the last time I seen it. I missed that last meeting, but we made a lot of cuts to the campground, but we didn't do any cuts to the lighting. Is that true or not? Yeah. So, I know the, this main thing when we voted on was for the campground, and the lighting was part of it, but is there anywhere we can, you know, we're gonna lose our asphalt road on here now, I know, and so I'd just like to see some cuts. I don't know if we can do it, but the lighting got, didn't get cut, but the campground did, and that was the main drive of this thing, of this vote. So, that's my question, is why, you know, we cut the campground, and then why were we so far off on the numbers, or you guys are so far off in the numbers? You know, we would've, we would've voted for more money if we would've been more accurate on the numbers, I guess.
So, first, I guess I'll say is that we actually, the initial plan we brought, we actually have the same amount of sites. We have the master plan.
I agree on that site. I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about, we had to make so much cuts on the campground, but we didn't do any cuts on the, on the lighting. And then if we would've known the campground would've been a lot nicer, we would've put more money in the bond, or in the vote. So why were we so far off, is my question?
One of the numbers in the 2014 estimate that was underestimated was the buildings for the campground. We put a budget line item for the restroom structure, the bathhouse, at $700,000. That's probably on the high end, but, and we likely could probably procure something for less, but we wanted to err on the high side, depending on what route the city wanted to go with the finishes and things of that nature. So that was one of the items that was, when we put together this updated estimate, it was, our scope was just to basically take the numbers from 2014 and add inflation to it. So we didn't do a robust analysis, that wasn't a part of our scope when we put together this initial estimate. And so I think that was one of the items that caused some issues with the budget, was that the buildings were underrepresented in that 2014.
Well, we just gotta, I just wanna, I mean, if we gotta cut one, we gotta cut the other, and I think that'd be more fair, it's fair to everybody, you know, and so I'll be questioning that as it comes in the future.
Yeah.
Other? Other questions?
I have a question of Brian, and it really doesn't have a whole lot to do with this, but when we're redoing, when we're doing that road down there, where does the water and sewer run? Does that run right down the middle of the road, like a lot of places, or is that off to one side?
Are you, are you referring to Shoreview Drive?
Shoreview Drive, where we're gonna do.
I believe it's beneath the road, the existing gravel road, not Shoreview.
Okay, so it's down, down the middle of the road?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. When we do that road, is there any way that we can put takeoffs to the empty lots that are there, so we don't have to dig up that road again when somebody builds?
Yeah, I believe, I believe they're already there, but that's part of the package when we look at paving, too.
Okay.
So, just like the convention points and everything. If they're not present, we'll definitely extend them as part of the road project beyond the impact zone, and, or vice versa, so.
Yeah, it's just, it seems like every time we
Yep.
Build a new road, within a year, we're digging into it for water sewer hookup, and I just understand. Be ahead of it.
I agree. It's something we take a look at, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Grant, for the update.
Thank you.
Item number three on our agenda is a franchise fee, franchise fee discussion. We'll call on our City Administrator, Andrew Brem, to have to kick that discussion off. Good morning, Andrew.
Yeah, good morning, Your Honor, members. Let me just get situated here real quick. All right. Well, this, we got a handful of slides for you this morning, and certainly open and encouraging questions at the end, or throughout if something pops up, but, excuse me. Before I begin, I just want to thank Sandy, Bill, Gene, and all the others who helped put this together. They did a great job, as you'll see here in a couple of minutes, and it's been a lot of work that's gone into this. So we're kind of excited to be here this morning and kind of kicking off this process in front of the council. I just want to acknowledge real quick, the picture on the screen, I think it sets the stage for the conversation. This is an intersection here in town that recently went from, you know, real bad to, to, I would say, a beautiful improvement in a really nice section of town. You know, and I guess it proves that with funding, you can have these things in Fergus Falls and elsewhere, so I just wanted to kind of set the stage for what's possible when we do these projects.
Andrew, could you speak up a little louder, please?
I have no problem doing that. What are franchise fees? I know a lot of you have probably had exposure to this in the past, but for the community's sake, we wanted to really get down to the basics here and make sure everybody understands what we're talking about. Franchise fees are essentially fees that the city charges for the use of their right-of-way. You know, city-owned right-of-ways are used for roads, sidewalks, trail purposes, but also utilities are within the right-of-ways. Cable companies, internet providers have fiber, the utility companies, electric companies, gas companies, all have utilities in the right-of-ways. We do have franchise agreements with the utilities, so they are able to use the right-of-way for their business purposes. That's really a contractual arrangement to talk about expectations of using those public right-of-ways. And under Statute 216B.36, cities are authorized to charge a fee, franchise fee, for the use of city right-of-ways. So that's what we're talking about today, is franchise fee related to utility companies, in this case, gas and electric companies utilizing the city's right-of-way. So how do franchise fees work? We have to adopt by ordinance franchise agreements with all of our utility companies, and then franchise fee ordinances as well. Once those are adopted, the utility companies are required to collect those fees and remit them to the city of Fergus Falls, or the city. Oftentimes, you see, when franchise fees are charged to utilities, they do pass those on to the customers on their monthly utility bill. In this case, my understanding is our utility companies plan to do that, and that fee would appear on a utility customer's bill as a city fee. So if this goes forward, and this is implemented, when that time comes, there'll be an additional line item on that bill related to these fees that are labeled "city fee." Franchise fees can either be a percentage of the utility customer's sales, gross sales, or a flat dollar amount. We see examples of that both ways in Minnesota. What we're gonna propose here towards the tail end of this is a percentage, so keep that in mind, a percentage of gross sales. And then once the utility company collects those fees, they remit those back to the city to be used for designated projects. In the case of Fergus Falls, we're proposing those projects be specific to streets, reconstructions, and repavement of streets. I just, too, want to note, these are billed to the customer monthly, but in some cases, the utility companies remit them to the city quarterly. I know at least one of the utility companies wants to do it monthly, and one of them wants to do it quarterly. So, we're gonna see a little bit of a variation as to when the money actually comes to the city, but that's really not an issue for, for the way we're gonna look at this. All right, why would we implement franchise fees? Franchise fees are a common way for cities to fund projects without increasing property taxes. It really creates a dedicated annual revenue stream, a new dedicated annual revenue stream in our case. And nearly half of Minnesota cities are using franchise fees to fund things like street improvements, parking lots, trails, sidewalks, and other projects. So it's, it's not an uncommon tool, and we're actually seeing more and more as the years go on, and costs are rising, and cities are needing to identify additional revenue streams. And then I just want to note, the city of Fergus Falls residents have some experience with franchise fees, as for many, many years, there's been a franchise fee on cable. Some cable subscribers have paid a franchise fee. That money has been collected to fund our local pay access TV station. Why do we need to use franchise fees for streets? Fergus Falls maintains over 122 miles of streets. That's a staggering number, and, you know, for a city of our size, that's significant. In 2023, we're spending about $3.5 million for street maintenance, which includes mill and overlays, and also our reconstructions. You'll see in a few slides that what we're proposing would collect about $1.3 million in revenue on an annual basis. So it doesn't, it doesn't fill out the picture, per se, but it's certainly a good start to the money that we need to spend on an annual basis. Our current funding for street maintenance, construction, and reconstructions come from our municipal state aid. You often hear us refer to that as MSA. That's a defined amount that comes from the state of Minnesota. Special assessments, which are never popular. Bonding, which is repaid through a tax levy, property taxes, and then general property taxes in the form of mill and overlays and seal codes and things like that. All right. The city has a comprehensive plan for future street improvements, but as we all know, costs are rising, and funding hasn't kept up with those costs. We've put together a five-year, what I would say is really aggressive, plan to address some of our most problematic streets, and that will be difficult to do based on the cost that we see, but it would be much more difficult without a dedicated funding source or revenue stream like this. We've heard loud and clear for the last few years that residents and business owners want additional streets completed, that streets are their number-one concern and their number-one problem. And the council reiterated as much at their retreat, when their top priority was maintaining our existing assets and focusing on the infrastructure, rather than continuing to do new things while other things are unaddressed. Implementing this franchise fee could help us fund additional street projects, and it would allow us to do more on an annual basis and get further ahead. And as I've noted a few times, it's predictable revenue source to help fund these projects and keep them on a more proactive and timely schedule. So it's, it's a revenue that we know is gonna be relatively stable. Energy prices aren't, you know, going down necessarily, and it's a, it's something that consumers have to have. Why franchise fees versus a tax increase? Franchise fees spread the cost of maintenance among everyone who benefits or uses the streets. All utility owners within the city would help pay for street maintenance rather than just property owners. The franchise fee, unlike a tax, would apply to all customers within the city, including rental properties, nonprofits, tax-exempt entities, and governmental entities. So it really is everybody who uses utilities that would pay a portion of that. And then the last point here, which I think is a really valid argument, is, you know, when there is new construction, that certainly results in new utility accounts and new users. Those accounts start to contribute to this immediately, rather than one or two years down the road as property taxes lag. And a lot of times, you know, you have, you built the new road for new development, and by the time with the lagging taxes and the, you know, the development taking time to build out, you're already looking at maintenance on a road before you've even collected enough money to fund the initial cost of the road, the property taxes. So this really helps get ahead of that curve as you begin collecting right away. Just wanted to kind of simplify through a graph here the process. City would impose a franchise fee on the utility companies. Franchise fees, again, would be collected by the utility companies and then remitted to the city. The city is proposing to use these funds dedicated to street improvement projects. I failed to mention at the beginning, the utility companies involved, Otter Tail Power, Great Plains Natural Gas, and Lake Regional Electric Cooperative. Those are the three that operate within city limits, some to a lesser extent. And I just want to say, they've all been great to work with and appreciate their partnership as we've gotten to this point. We've had a lot of questions back and forth, and, you know, as we're looking at data related to the amount of revenue they collect, so we can do some of these calculations, they've been very forthcoming with that information and very responsive. So I appreciate their partnership in this. And I will say, for most of them, it's, the franchise fee concept is not a new one. They're very familiar with it, and their software handles it just fine, and they, it would be a fairly seamless transition for them. So, the recommendation before the council is coming from both city staff and the Tax Levy Committee, who have had significant discussions about streets and funding for streets and infrastructure plans and all those things. We're recommending the implementation of a 5% franchise fee. So that would be 5% for the user, based on their utility bills, both electric and gas. We're proposing a monthly cap per account of $1,000. The last time we discussed this, we had a lot of concerns about, you know, there being no cap, and if you're a big user, the number can be outrageous. We thought it was very important, and we see some cities that utilize a cap and some that don't. It's kind of all over the board, but this, this is what we're proposing, is we can cap it at $1,000. Based on the timeline that we're on, the franchise fee would be effective March 1st, 2024, and I'll get into that a little more in a minute. And then we're projecting that our collections would provide about $1.3 million annually to improve city streets, and that's based on existing numbers today. Obviously, as utility rates go up, that number will continue to rise with that as well, because it's a percentage. So what does that mean for the customer? Just give a couple of examples. And again, if a house has both gas and electric, they need to combine those amounts to calculate this. If you just have electric, it's pretty easy. If you just have gas, you probably don't just have gas. So if you have a $150 utility bill between the combined utilities per month, you're looking at about a $7.50 increase, which equates to about $90 a year. If your utility bill is $500 a month, that's $25 increase, $300 a year. So you can, you can see the numbers on the screen. Again, 5% is the math behind that. So the proposed timeline, today, October 11th, we're before you kicking this off, what we're gonna ask is on Monday night, you direct the city attorney to draft the franchise fee ordinances. October 26th, we're gonna be holding an open house here at the city hall in the council chambers from 5:00 to 6:30, with a formal presentation at 5:30. It's gonna look very similar to this one, but city staff will be available to answer questions that people may have and provide any additional information they seek about the proposed franchise fee. November 6th, we're asking that the council, assuming this continues down this path, would offer up the first reading of that ordinance. November 20th would be the second reading of the ordinance. Those would then, the summary publication would go into the Daily Journal, November 22nd. After that's published, 50 22nd. After that's published, 15 days later, the ordinance becomes effective, so December 7th. And then the utility companies have, at least two of them have some process related to the Public Utilities Commission they have to follow, which takes about 60 days. So, um, from December to February, want to give them time to submit their filings and, and follow the PUC process and do everything they need to do to get it in place. That gets us to the middle of February, so we figured it makes sense to, uh, begin the collection of the fee at the beginning of the month, so March 1st, 2024. Um, in the meantime, the gene has a very robust communications plan. We want the community to be aware of what we're proposing. We want their questions to be answered. So we've created a, uh, a page on the city website with FAQs. Um, there's going to be a utility flyer that goes to all, um, city of Fergus Falls customers, and we'll also do some targeted radio and newspaper ads related to, uh, what's being proposed. So, um, we're not trying to, trying to move quickly. We're not trying to, uh, you know, have anybody in the dark on this. We want people to know that these funds are strictly for streets, and, uh, this is a revenue source to, to make progress on that. So if you have any suggestions, we're also going to do the, um, um, Service Club Circuit, for the most part. I think we have a lot of those scheduled. I'm going to be on the TV with Lisa Workman, I believe, and then I have a video date on Friday as well. So we have, we're going to try to be out there. We're going to try to, you know, have people hear about this. So, um, shout out to staff if, uh, there's any ways you can identify that we can do better and do more with that. So that, uh, concludes the powerpoint that we have. Bill, did I miss anything you want to add?
Covered it very well.
Awesome.
Thanks, Andrew. Go ahead, Jim.
I have one question.
Sure.
Is, is that fee on the total bill, which includes already sales tax, are we going also a tax, sales tax, which is a tax we're already paying?
I doubt it, but we'll look at that.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Energy consumption. Good question.
Others? Yeah, go ahead, Al.
Thank you. Um, just a question here under why implement franchise fees. Uh, it, I just kind of checked projects. Is there any other projects besides streets that this is going to be used for?
Good question. Uh, no, Your Honor, Councilmember Creamer, streets. And by streets, we mean road surface, whether it be mill and overlay, seal code, reconstruction, patching. What am I missing?
Reclamations.
Reclamations, and then, um, curb and gutter as well. So anything from curb to curb on top, not utilities below.
So. And if we have some gravel streets, it could be something with that too, of course. But we would, it would be restricted for streets.
And not street lighting either.
Correct. Not street lighting, just.
Streets, surfaces.
Restricted for it.
So, and they estimate, uh, 1.3 to be collected in 2024, is that correct?
Yeah, those are based on, um, 2022 and the first part of 2023 numbers. So it could be a little bit higher than that, depending on, you know, I suppose there's some factors, whether how cold the winter is, how hot the summer is, and, and utility usage. But, um, those are on actual numbers that were, uh, collected.
Also too, Andrew, what is, you're talking about a 5% franchise fee. What's kind of the normal? I mean, what's the max? And what's kind of the minimum people are doing? Or I, actually, what is the max?
Yeah, I don't know that there is a max necessarily. Um, 5% is fairly common. We see that, I believe, Bemidji and Crookston are both at 5%.
Yeah.
And, uh, those are two of Otter Tail Power's bigger customers like Fergus Falls. Um, some cities are at 3%. Some cities have a set dollar amount where they're going to collect, you know, $3 a month per customer kind of thing. And, um, there's no real science behind what the right number is, other than we wanted to make sure that if we're going to do it, it's at least meaningful and impactful to actually be able to do more streets on an annual basis, without being unaffordable.
And with that, um, like you mentioned, Bemidji and Crookston at 5%, Bemidji has no cap on it, where we're proposing the $1,000 cap, and Crookston has a $2,500 a month cap. So both of those being higher than our cap.
And also, Bill, basically those caps are for companies?
Yep, for the large companies.
Yeah. Because I don't think I use that much power.
You have other questions for Tom?
Yeah, and, um, it, it's no secret that I'm a big proponent of these franchise fees. And I know I say it just about every time I open my mouth, but, you know, I really want to drive the point home to folks that, I mean, we live in the worst place on the planet where you could build roads with our, you know, seasonal fluctuations. Um, and, and this is kind of a way for people to put their money where their mouth is. I mean, if, if repairing the streets are really as important as we hear about, then it's not free. It's expensive. We need to pay for it. Um, the one thing that I would like to discuss a little further is a possible exemption for public educational institutions. You know, I feel like, like, you know, our school district is already stretched thin enough and, uh, and doesn't need the additional burden. Um, you know, then I would imagine there will be other folks coming forward requesting exemptions as well, and, and we do have to draw the line somewhere there. Um, but I remember during the last discussion about this, M State was pretty concerned with the amount that they would have to pay, but obviously the cap, you know, helps to address that. Um, so that's, that's one part of it that I'd like to see a little more discussion around. But overall, I think it's a great idea, and if the people of Fergus Falls want to have, you know, buttery smooth streets, this is one way that we can make a little bit of progress toward that.
We should get a motion to bring this to the council for discussion on Monday night as well. Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Scott. Second. Scott, did you have a question, uh, comment?
A couple of questions.
Question.
As we define streets, and you were talking about curb to curb and that kind of thing, would that also include parking lots? As we finish these downtown streets, for example, now they look great, and it just really points out how crummy some of these downtown parking lots are, for example, either gravel or beat-up asphalt. Would it include those surfaces as well, or no?
That would be up for the council to decide.
We didn't talk about parking lots, so.
So I, I don't have, if you want, if you guys want to include parking lots in, in the designation for these funds, you're welcome to do that.
I, I guess if they're not clearly either included or excluded, that's a question that we probably need to know.
They were not included in the conversations we've had with all of the things we've put together for today.
Okay.
But they certainly could be. It just pulls more money away from the street services.
I understand that. Um, the second question then, and it, it's related as far as what pulls money from what, is as the tax levy committee put together our budget proposal that we looked at a week or so ago, uh, the increase that we're expecting is 8-point-something percent. If this $1.00 million had been added or included in on what we were planning to spend next year, and we didn't have the franchise fees in place, what might that number have been? You know, would we be looking at a 10% or 12? Or, I mean, is it something that's really, I wondered just what that number might be. I don't know that you necessarily have that off the top of your head, but.
Well, we could get close, because we were about 7, 1% increase was about $71,000. So if you do the math, 1.3 million divided by 71,000, you'll get a percentage.
But we didn't put 1.3 in the expenditures for 2024 because we're just starting to collect. But as I looked at, for an example, over the five years, if we look at this aggressive street plan for five years, if we did, you know, applied all our funding sources, like Andrew went through, your MSA, your federal dollars, special assessments, when you come down to, um, what's left that you'd need to bond for, I think over the five years, it would add about 17, 18% in a levy. But if we just take $1.3 million off that each year, however we apply that into the streets, that would reduce that down to about 10% total levy increase over, over the years. So just on, if we're looking at $30 million worth of pavement projects in five years, like I said, that's aggressive. Not saying that's exactly the plan, because they change every year, but we're looking at that estimate. So it does make quite a dent, you know, over that five-year period, and then, of course, after that as well. So I kind of looked, I tried to look at it in the five-year window of, okay, what are all these projects? And we're still in the process of billing out that capital plan and how all the puzzle pieces fit together, but.
Okay.
But to your question, it would be over 18% this year.
It would certainly go higher, um, because I think in our budget, we put in one overlay project for like $750,000. If we didn't do the franchise fees and we still do that project, then we'd have to increase the levy for the bonds on that. And again, so many of the projects that we're doing in 2024, those levies will come on in 2025, because of course we finance them next summer, first payments are made the following year. We will s- still be putting a bond issue together in '24 for Summit, Linden, Laurel, Stanton, um, projects that will be under construction, so. I'm probably muddying the waters more than anything.
But, well, I think a related piece of the question then would be, if we were to add this to what we do, um, will we still maintain what we have been doing? That's the simplest way to put it.
Yes.
So that if we've been putting so much money per year into street work, um, then now we don't suddenly say, well, now we've got this dedicated funding, we don't need to do that anymore. We'll use that to, you know, hire new people or do some other project or, you know, something else. So, uh, that, that would be the fear, I guess, that it would have, is that we just, okay, all of this is going to be streets, and then it changes the rest of the budgeting so that we're not getting what we want out of this.
The tax levy committee was very clear of, we're still increasing the, um, maintenance dollars in the general fund, and we know we're still going to be adding to it for the other projects we do. So that's been made clear that we're not going to decrease our existing funding. We'll probably still be increasing that as well as franchise fees to bring all these puzzle pieces together. But it was made very clear from the tax levy committee that streets are the priority, and we're not going to decrease that. We want to add to it.
Yeah. And just, when we started this process, Laura and I were talking, biggest thing was to push that, and we were not going to reduce, uh, Scott, we're not reducing that number. As a matter of fact, we raised it 300,000, I think it was. Maybe not quite that much. But anyway, it, we just, the, the franchise fee is just going to hurry this along to, to please the people because, and, and to get the streets better. And going back to the parking lots, we've, we, we didn't talk about parking lots, but in my mind, get the streets done that our people travel on the most and get that, you know, we're doing a good job. Now we're just going to get, just keep going with it. And, uh, not that we're going to exclude the residential areas, but we're going to focus more on, I want to focus more on the, the main streets that we're going to be doing, that people travel on, that are bad. So.
Yeah, I think the conversation was that that 26 million that Ryan had presented as a, a need, we want to go after that.
Right.
Definitely. And this is a way to do it, right? Like, this is, obviously, it's increasing people's monthly utility bills, but like Tom said, if we're going to, if we're going to take on those major costly improvements, they're going to cost. And so, um, this is, this is a way to fund that, so. Um, all right. So we have a, there's going to be a lot of discussion, I anticipate, with constituents, with people. We're going to get this to the public, so we'll, we'll continue this conversation. But, um, for now, there's a motion to bring this to the council, to have our city attorney draft the necessary paperwork to start this process on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Sandy and Laura and Scott for the work on this. All right, we're going to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting, and we will reconvene a special city council meeting to consider an appeal to the denial of a THC license. So we will convene this Fergus Falls City Council meeting now at 7:45 AM on Wednesday, October 11th. Roll call, please. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
I do want to work.
Yes.
Yep.
We have a court. All right, good morning. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Your Honor.
I'll turn it over to you for, to, um, introduce this item for us. Good morning.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yes, Lincoln Vapor submitted a second application for a THC license. Uh, there were no changes from the first time that they applied for the license. Um, the application, uh, was denied based, uh, on the criminal history, just as it was the first go-around. Uh, I think, uh, what I'll do is I'll allow, uh, the gentleman to present, um, their argument to you as the counsel, and then I'll, uh, come up for some closing comments, so.
Thanks, Chief.
Would you like to address the council on your issues?
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Justin Danbury. I'm co-owner of Lincoln Vapor LLC in town here. Um, not much has really changed since the last time we were here, uh, other than our sales have decreased, uh, right around about 37%. And I guess what we want to do is try this again, and hopefully you guys have a change of heart, and we can be allowed to compete in this market. So that's really, it's really all we have.
All right. So, we have a, uh, a motion before, uh, I'm sorry, an item before us, it would be a, uh, an appeal. We need to take action on that. Chief, help me out.
Sure.
Help me out with the, um, procedure here, that, because then we, we have denied the license, we would need, and then we have an appeal. We need to take action on that appeal, correct?
Correct. And I, I guess, um, my stance hasn't changed since the first time. I probably a little bit even, uh, dug my heels in a little bit more on, it should be denied, uh, basically on the, uh, for the main reason that nothing has changed. Um, I think that the individuals applying for the license, they could have taken some action to better their odds of passing a background check. Um, you know, and again, um, I have to view these things from the totality of the application, uh, that's presented before me. Uh, there's three individuals on that application. I would say one of those individuals would pass a background check. Uh, the other two are in question. Um, they could have made changes to their application to, uh, alleviate one of those individuals being on the application, um, and, and found somebody else that didn't have, um, a background that would have been problematic for the license. Uh, they could have gone to the courts, gone through an expungement process, again, to better their odds of their application being approved. So the, so the mere fact that nothing has changed, um, I guess just kind of strengthens my opinion that, uh, we as a city should not change our opinion in, in denying the, uh, the license. Um, and I just think it, it, we're, we're starting down a slippery slope. Uh, our, my decision is based on factual information. It is an objective decision. I can't base my decisions on, um, you know, who these people are, what they've done in their lives, uh, that type of thing. That becomes very subjective, kind of lends itself to potentially good old boy type of system. I have to look at the facts in the application that are, you know, before me, and that's the decision that I make. So that would be my recommendation. You as a council will have to vote whether to, um, grant the, uh, application or deny the application. So that's what question is before you today.
Thanks, Chief. And so, um, is it, this, this is a resolution? This will be a resolution, correct?
Correct.
And if I'm just remembering, Rolf, we'll put that in the affirmative, correct?
Correct.
So, um, would there be a motion to, or there be a resolution to, um, approve, approve the license? We'll, we'll, we'll look for a, uh, then we'll talk through it before we vote. But is there a, a resolution to approve the license that's before us? So we can consider this motion. We're going to need to take some action, so, um.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Jim, there's a resolution. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second, okay. So the resolution is to approve the license. We'll make sure we call that before we vote. Yes, Scott?
I just, I will vote no on this because of the recommendations of our chief. But, if you want that to move ahead, you got to try to do something different. That was, I was hoping we'd see something different, and we didn't see nothing, so.
What, what?
I didn't see, no changes, no changes you guys made.
Can't change background. Background's going to show up.
No, but you could, like Kyle explained, you know, you could do.
Dustin, Dustin is a hiree that we hired. This guy came out of prison. We gave him a chance, and he's proven to be a good employee. I'm not going to.
Following what Kyle said, and that's exactly where I'm going to, I'm going to base, I'm going to base that on my decision on him, so.
That's silly.
But it, but it isn't, it isn't silly. It is.
That is silly.
Okay.
Step back, step back.
Sure. My, my, my point, my point is that you have a business and you make decisions in your life, and you want to sell a product that's controlled, a product that you need a license for, okay? And, and yes, I understand, and I have supported people going through rehabilitation for over 20 years. I understand. I understand that's a part of our process. But I have to make decisions based on factual information. And yes, there are things that you could have done within your application, within your business model, that would have bettered your chances for your application to be approved, and you didn't do that. And yes, there are things that you can do to change your background. You can seek an expungement through the courts. Those are all things that you can do. But the fact that you came, presented the same application, and did nothing different, why would we change our decision? That's my point.
Thanks, Chief. So we have a mo, a resolution to approve the license. So if if you're, everyone clear on the motion, right? Of a no vote is is against, is against the appeal, correct? I just want to make sure we're clear on that, because we're going to have a resolution in the affirmative. Everyone clear? All right. There's a resolution to approve the license. Roll call, please.
No.
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 Kramer.
Oh.
No.
That resolution fails. Thank you. And with that, Lynn, do you have any other issues to come before the council? We're adjourned.